Nobody else has seen. Last thing you saw. That was.
Right.
Yeah.
Who?
I didn't hear the last one. I didn't see it right. So we get everybody. Well, you know, the developer don't drive. Nobody wants to develop there.
Well, we will next month.
Or once. Well, Rachel said when this project is that. I need like that way to make sure everybody's on. We're starting to. This side of. I don't. This last one. It's not to this one. Yes. So. That's why. And so. I need to take. You. It wasn't. I remember every time. Every time. They enter. There's. Yep. So far. We're done. You're in. Come on out. There is. They do. I got. Two of them. Ramblers are. They want four miles. From where I go last. Actually. Was it tough? Guess what? I like. Nine. Dude. That's. I mean, you can talk about. Those. I know. But I should have said sixty. Yeah. I'd be. You're talking. At one thirty. Being. The. Yes. It will. But I did. But I will say. I did believe. There were. Again. But I was gonna say it's ten years ago. Not now. Every year, every year. And. Four and five. That's. Wait. I mentioned enough that. That was somebody. That's. How long? Three seventy. I want to mention that. I. This was. Sixty seven. That's. How we can get. The whole. Why is he in there? I can't say. I think. Oh, yeah. He needs. Here's. That was.
Rachel, can you hear me?
Yeah. I don't know.
Aaron, are you talking to me?
I just asked if you could hear me.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll screw up considering the roll call. They're fourth. I know. She'll be whipping. I know. I'm moving.
Here's a list of COVID stuff that we've been so far.
Where we're at.
Yeah. Well. I spent another six thousand days. But. Tech. Sidwell. Chief. Figured out how we get covered.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
I've got some of these masks. But hey, when you wear glasses. They fall down.
Yeah.
Someone take a breath. Yeah. Those two. Where's those for saving glasses? All that. Black thing hard. One up and down. We're. Yeah. That's a job. Right. They got. Fuck that. Get somebody walking around. Down the. Yeah. Hey, Steve.
Yo. I think it's tighter. That'll sometimes.
Just put. It's a side up. It's not with side. Your. Your glasses should fall off. See here. We're. Got it. Oh, thank you. I don't think. Thank you. Yeah.
Are you putting on the? Oh, that's.
Well, it's six o'clock. Should we get started? Okay. If I could have your attention. We need to get roll call started here, Mr. Bab.
Please. Okay. We are. All right. We're waiting. We got a final line, Jim. Probably not. Need a order, too.
I don't think. Uh. Hi. Over here. I don't think Jeff Randle called in yet. And Bob Jones just called and he's trying to log in.
Jeff LeMans. Ashley's supposed to be here.
Okay.
Has she called in? I think she's supposed to be there.
Ashley, are you? Is that your number?
All right. Can you hear me, Rachel?
Yeah. You hear us?
Okay. Is there a change? Are we supposed to meet at the town hall? I can hustle over there if that be the case.
Really?
You don't have to. You can do it over the. Over the. That's okay.
All right. I'll come. I can be there. I'll be there in five minutes, okay?
All right.
Okay. Thanks.
Better hang him up because he didn't. There you go.
He's gone now. Well. We.
There's. That's. Yes. So. Okay. Hey. Ashley. Ashley.
I don't see her yet.
Yeah. Just need it.
It'll be the last.
Hey. Everybody had a mask on. I started talking to an employee and realized halfway through the conversation it was different.
Six. Everybody's online now. On our. I'll call the radio. Take the moment of silence, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands. Under God. In the. Social liberty. And justice.
Roll call, please.
All right. Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Bob Jones will be here, I guess. Jessica's not here or available this evening. Chip Bab.
Here. Currently. Four. Maybe we got one more. Got four of his wives. So. Four and five of them are here. All of them. I think half time we need the. Minutes of our June meetings, which include the. Executive sessions. From the minutes. Meeting of. June twenty ninth. I would do that. June. Executive sessions, we're just talking about our. Interviews. And no votes were taken in there. Two executive meetings we had for the town manager. So. Matter of record on that. Approval minutes for the June meeting was. June eleventh. You want. It's all right. It's all right. What do they have?
Any minute.
Any. Questions or concerns on the minutes at the top? Would I have a motion to approve? I make a motion where you approve. Uh, June's. Minutes.
I'll say. The motion.
Motion in a second for the June. Eleven meeting. All the people say aye.
Aye.
All those say.
Oh, this is Ashley. I'm just gonna jump in here real quick. We need to do everything about with a roll call vote.
Okay. Back up. And. Mr. Kirk.
Yes, sir. Okay. We're in here. Steve Denny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Shane Davis.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. That motion's turned. Yes. Prove on the round of executive session from six eighteen and six twenty two.
We need a roll call vote on this? Bob Jones.
I. This is. Session.
Okay.
Give me a motion. Motion that we didn't meet on Tuesday.
Second.
Can I have a motion for second? Have a roll call vote, please.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye.
Motion carried four oh. The motion for the. June twenty second. I guess it says on here. Actually, June twenty nine. Is that correct? Yes. Wait. First. So I need a motion to approve the executive session on six twenty nine point two.
Second.
Motion second. Willie.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Motion carried four oh.
Okay. Would you be able to speak into the mic maybe? Because they're having a hard time hearing you. Yeah. That might help. You're the only one I'm getting complaints about. They said everyone else they can hear. But you're the only one talking, so.
Court Treasuries report, please.
Okay. As you can see from the sheet in front of you, the general fund, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty four dollars. It's a lot since. Real good compared to the past and everything. One thing I put in front of you is. A project we did in the clerk's office and. Our great ladies started from day one. Anything we bought for the COVID virus. We coded it so we. Now we can print out this report. The date, we spent about thirty eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty three dollars. Of the hundred and thirty nine thousand that is available to us to draw from. It's strictly of give them a receipt. We get paid back. We pay for it first, they reimburse us. That's where we're at on that. Any questions about that?
Good report on their. Any question or comment on. I got a question on that. Will it all night on the. Breaking tracking of. All on. Does that have to be. Does that approve by the. Before you actually check? But claims.
We have a list from the state that tells what is acceptable, what's not. Lost revenue, lost profits, not one of the things it's not. Most of the stuff, if it's related to prevention or healthcare. It's everything, even down to the point if we want to rent a motel room for a homeless person out here. They'll take care of it. So it's. And one other thing we did today, and I don't know if the chief bar is on there, but. The police department has to buy new computers for each car to update their system and everything. And this was an expense we were gonna have to do no matter what. And. With. The chief. And Captain, they worked out and we figured out a way to do it. And so that the COVID money would pay for that sixty eight thousand dollars. So that'll help us a lot there. Captain Sidwell did a lot of work on that and I want to thank you for that.
Anything else on?
It's all I got.
Court Treasuries report. Can I have a motion to approve Court Treasuries report?
I'll make a motion to approve the Court Treasuries report.
I'll say that. Motion in a second. Court. Court Treasuries report. A voice vote, please.
I'm sorry.
That you will.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Dandy.
Aye.
Bob Jones.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Yes. Court Treasuries report. Zero. Department reports will start with fire chief. Anything? That thing is not already. Okay. Too far. You online.
I don't sit too far.
Have we got his report? Also. Judge, are you online? We got his too. Aaron Burr, you online for the court?
I am here.
Good talk, buddy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh. Nothing to add other than I just want to thank my guys for working out in this hot weather. They've really knocked it out these past week and a half or so. But other than that, what I have on my report is in front of you. And if you don't have any questions.
One comment, Aaron. The area east of the entrance to the Fall Diamond. I saw the guys down there working. They did a great job cleaning that out and made. Now when people pull out, it's a little safer. They can see around there. So a very good job.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them.
Appreciate it.
Town manager report. You want? You want me to go to the podium here?
Okay. Um, well. Glad to be here. So thank you for putting your trust in me. And then I also want to thank the employees because they've been great. Getting me transitioned. Getting me up to speed. You know, we're peeling the onion. I'm learning a little bit as we go along what they do. And Rachel's been phenomenal. I can't. Can't believe she's not. She claims she's not sick of my questions yet. All the way from the simple stuff of, you know, where's the refrigerator? The. Well, how we get a fund Franklin Street? So. I'm sure the trivial ones are grabbing you and that's more than anything.
I just keep saying, I'm happy to have you here. And you can ask me all the questions you want.
Oh, yeah. She was dumping. She tried to dump stuff on me the first day. I was like. So now she's. She's. Feeding it to me at a pace I can digest. So I appreciate it, Rachel. Good job. So I just today want to go over some things with you. It should be up here on the screen. And just the issues that. So that you know what we're starting to look at. This. This. It's not a complete list, but the first thing I want to do is we've got an emergency situation with flooding. And it's a. The line that runs along the old railroad tracks between Pendleton Avenue and Main Street. From Elm down to the manhole of Madison. On the would be on the west side of Madison. And then that dumps a few feet later into one of the legal drains. So we ran a camera. They had run a camera just before I took over last. Took the job last week. And on the Elm Street area, they found. Crushed pipe or damaged pipe. So water is not flowing there. And it's backing up. Into Pendleton Avenue. It's backing up into. On the Main Street and it literally becomes a river. Blows out of people's backyards. We've got gushers in there. It's washed out some driveways. Blows out of some driveways down Main Street. And then turns right at tile. And then the low point tile, which is about two houses down. You know, there's a little ravine. It turns left and then heads for the legal drain where it's supposed to end up anyway. But good. Getting there one way or the other. The right way or the wrong way. And then. So. We asked the camera crew to come back. They were here Monday. They understand the situation. I should back up. The flooding, we've got reports of as high as waist deep. It's getting into some grides in the back, both on the. The homes that back up to the old train tracks at. The homes off of Pendleton Avenue and Main Street. So. It's. It's pretty severe. We've had gushers up coming out of the drains. They're pulling in water. It's pushing water out about two or three feet high. Pretty severe. So that's why we're treating it as an emergency. Brought the camera in Monday so we could run it upstream, which is a little bit harder to do. We brought in a robot camera. And they didn't. They. They didn't even run the camera because they found crushed. A crushed pipe, the eighteen inch line that comes in. And somebody had crushed it and then put two. Eight. Eight inch lines to try and cover up the damage they had done. I don't know how deep those eight inch lines go. But indications are that they did this so nobody would know. Like somebody did it and didn't want. Us to know. At the time, Fall Creek was doing a lot of work right in that area. If you remember, that is where the contractor had his yard, his construction yard. So. Last two years. And then also we found a twenty thirteen photo that shows that that manhole was higher than it is now. So somebody had damaged it. Probably damaged the manhole and then crushed that pipe. So we've got things plugged up on both sections, both ends of that. And then today we opened up the pipe midway. So that the camera can come in tomorrow and then go both directions. And then we'll determine how much damage we have. I fully expect we're gonna see damage because the gushing indicates such severe. Backwash pipe has probably been rushed. Washed out underneath. I expect to find damage from manhole to manhole. Banning, and I sat down and did on the back of a napkin, it's probably gonna be about two hundred thousand. Cost. And I've got a couple ideas on how to pay for that. So. We're gonna move as fast as we can. I hope. My goal, eye in the sky goal is to start moving dirt at the end of next week. To. Try and fix this. I might be able to use money from the electric department on the north end of Elm Street. Just because the camera guy has indicated to me that some of the poles have been set in a way that damaged that line. And so I think we'll be able to meet criteria for. State Board Council be okay with us using electrical signs to repair something that probably started with damage down with some poles. We put in. South. South side. I don't know what I'm gonna do. I'd like to find out who put in those eight inch lines. Um. So anybody. Anybody? Anybody got any questions on that? We're treating it as an emergency and I think Indiana law allows us to do certain things with contractors and bidding. In the expedited manner. And so we'll probably try and take. Take advantage of that. Yeah, that's a good question. So I asked Tim McCurdy to be there as soon as we ran the camera. We're gonna look at where. And of course, once. Once construction starts to repair it, we'll have. We'll know whether it was their contractor that got into that line or into that manhole. I'm hoping there's a date stamp on the main. Pipe of when it was manufactured. It'll help us indicate. How recent it is. That's a good question. They've been very cooperative. They've been there. You know. Right. Most of my. Questions that I get have been what we were talking about. Have we got any? Has any other people in town talked about flooding in other parts of the town? Yeah. So it backs up. So it's backing up water all the way up to High Street that I know of. There were some people sandbagging. So this, the flooding happened two weekends ago. The bad. The bad flood. They've been having bad drainage ever since. The sewer. The new sewer line was put in. Now, when I talked to Tim McCurdy with Fall Creek Reunion Waste District, they said, he said, now, remember. Some people had to disconnect their eaves. Their sump pumps from this old sewer line that they were replacing. So that. That could be expected to a certain extent. But you. We shouldn't have a situation where construction. Damaged. The line. It should not have been damaged during line. During that construction into this. We don't know if that's true or not yet until we. Get into it. But because it's an emergency situation, we can. We'll have to figure that out once we start. Construction. Spending money. I hope to use our own forces to the extent possible. But. To answer your question. Bob.
Yeah. Yeah. It's maybe like a two hundred thousand of an act. Or overall repair.
Yeah. Because we don't know yet. We don't know what we've got. Until. Until we run that camera. So there's laterals that go under the old built up train track. And that goes to the homes that face Pendleton Avenue. We don't know how much their damage that is. And that is gonna affect our cost. I did have an earlier estimation. That estimate that could have been as high as four hundred. But once I set that with banning. but once I set that with banning, banning engineering, we cut that back a lot. We'll probably put in an extra manhole to halfway, I will do it while we're doing. Probably put in a few extra guard drains, sitting there in the path. I, I hope so. Well, tell the truth, I wasn't supposed to start till the first of July, but what I heard about it, so we need to get started.
Then where they get the expression, you get your feet wet.
Yeah, my feet wet, that's really good, I like that. Okay, so the other things that we're looking into, and this is not a complete list, it's just all the things I could remember. So the depot parking lot design over here, that, that was completed, I looked at that, and I think there's a couple of things we could add that would, that the town needs to do, we need to add a sidewalk on the, that would, on the side of the, would be the west side, so that people come in down that alley, the, the structures, the homes, and, well, it's their own business, can have access through the back, onto a sidewalk. And then people can also, when they come out of the parking lot, they can go right to that sidewalk and turn left down to our businesses, or turn right to the park. I think we need to, we can't give vehicle access, but we can change the design a little bit so that people can have pedestrian access at the, at some of those residences. Okay, talking with the attorney, we can't let them have access into a parking lot, like if it was an alley, we could let them, we could let them have, have that, but. So anyway, we're going to change that design. Guys have started to work a little bit on the sidewalks damaged by the tornado. We're doing the demolition, IMI donated some concrete, and then we'll get a contractor to come in for the, form it up and pour the concrete. And then, we're looking into the Franklin Street project, Rachel could probably talk to more than I could about that, but we need to get that moving along, met with the principal at the elementary school, he has concerns about traffic flow issues, he would like he threw out some options, and so we need to look into that and do our homework on some of those options, see if it's feasible. Pond overflow at Country Farms, what was the meeting that we had where Dylan came in and talked about the sediment issue on that pond?
The pine.
What meeting was that?
The stormwater.
Stormwater meeting, so I went out next day and looked at that, and at the falls, they were, oh wait, I got two things mixed up. Skip down to where it says the falls, that's what I'm talking about now. So, found out on the design that they were supposed to go in and modify the Deerfield drainage pond, because they were going to be dumping more water into it, and that had not been done, and he was supposed to have that done thirty days ago. They've got water on, over the top of the pipe sometimes, and this is, I think there's only one structure in the falls yet, and the roads have been paved. We've already, we're already at the tip of the emergency spillway, and we got water, the pond has been as high as the top of the pipe for the outfall. And then on the back of the outfall, because of, it's so much water pressure, it's washing underneath the pipe. So, they need to get in there and get that fixed, do the modifications that they agreed to. And they've not been good about weed and erosion control.
Can I give a little bit more background on that? That was the fall subdivision, that was one that was approved back in two thousand eight, so it was kind of a, one that sat for many, many years, and it just recently picked up, so a lot of the things that should have been in place, that would give us tools to make sure these things were getting done, were not done back in two thousand eight, so, you know, we're learning some retroactive lessons whenever we're getting these new subdivisions, and now not making the same mistakes that were made back in two thousand eight. So, it's been kind of a, a learning curve for us, and we're going to be very diligent on not making those same mistakes that those in the past had made, not that I think it was intentional by any means, but just, you know, we've learned some better practices on. Yes, right, so, I just didn't want you guys to think that this was something that was an issue because of some negligence that we had in the last couple of years, it wasn't, it was, you know, a neighborhood that picked up that had already been approved and in place, and things like that, so.
And Kayla, I got to pass off to Kayla, she did find that, that they were supposed to do and modify that pond.
Yes, it was like a note on a drawing from two thousand eight that had that modification that she found, and said, hey, this isn't done right, so, yes, hats off to Kayla.
They, they did do, they did do, they have dust control problems too, they, they did take the truck out there and put some water down on the dust, I don't know if they did, have they cut the weed yet?
I think the dust was an issue in the Westport subdivision, I didn't think it was for the fall subdivision, but I could be wrong on that. I think we might be getting a couple, the, I mean, we got a lot going on in that area around the pines, so.
I do know that, you know, you'll see, it's usually wire with a fabric around inlets that they, that prevents dirt from flowing again to a drainage pipe until construction is completed. Well, that had collapsed, and so dirt was flowing into that pond, the Deerfield, and the sedimentation had caused the pond to rise, and then exaggerated the problem with the water being too high, but over the top of the pipe and almost. Got a pond overflow problem at Country Farms, the one pond in the middle flows to the pond that's in the outside on the Pendleton Avenue side of the farms, that subdivision. But we think we've got a clogged pipe again, a willow tree had clogged it once before, so if you see guys pumping water out of that pond, we were pumping it from the pond that was about ready to overflow to the one who, that, between Pendleton Avenue and Country Farms. They got that water down so that it wasn't a danger of overflowing or hurting people's basements. But now they're going to drain that pond, the outside pond by Pendleton Avenue, so they can run a camera up the outfall, the outfall of the pond in the center. We just, before we start digging, we just need to know where the collapse is, assuming it's a collapse. COVID relief fund expenditures, Will, the Bulls went over that. Street sweeping schedule, talked to the guys, I told them I want the street, street sweeper out there more. Now, from an engineering standpoint, the cleaner you keep the streets, the better your drainage is, and we've got so much drainage issues already, and it keeps the inlet from getting plugged up, it just looks nicer, everybody feels better when they see the street sweeping, not necessarily when they hear it at six in the morning, feel better when they see it out. I'm reviewing what we do for lemon and leaf pickup. People are, as you all know, are frustrated with that. Street water and electrical work procedures, we're reviewing that, sitting down with each department head, and tightening things up a little bit. But yeah, give the super, the department heads flexibility with their people. You know, like I say, here's, here's what, here's my constraints, what you do within, within those constraints is up to you. But, I want to put, put some things on there and, and rules. We've talked about, Mr. Jones, about the new salt barn. President USI, and we met, went over that. I feel very strongly, it shouldn't be anything that has metal, I prefer wood. And it probably should be something that's engineered and not just thrown together, because as soon as you do that, you'll have walls that are blown out because the pressure from, they want to put sand, salt, topsoil for the cemetery. Salt, sand, gravel, thank you, in that barn, so it, it needs to be engineered. Oh, the, the fence at the old treatment plant, we need to tear that down, it's such an eyesore, and, you know, you have four hundred parents driving by every day, and they pick up their kids. And then, I don't know why that got, that's my fault, but, but the water and electricity for special events. I want to look at that, see if we can expand that capability. Probably the most important thing I did this week was meet with the president of the Fountain Business Association, and then and Jack Wilson with the Main Street project, and they went over some things, and got me up to speed on what we need to do better as a town to help the businesses. There's a whole laundry list of those things, you know, right now, downtown businesses are, COVID is, you know, knocking them in the teeth. We need to do whatever we can as a town to keep those businesses, because the worst thing we could have is empty buildings downtown, if it just starts a avalanche, so. We need to bend over backwards for the moment. That's, that's about it, there's more, but, I think one page is enough.
Question for comments.
On the, on the falls, and we get a little sort of clouding of cooperation on getting the, getting projects out and getting that opened up where it needs to be. We force that through permits, public permits, say no permits until we get this done, or have any of us say you won't get this done as we, as we deem appropriate?
Kayla called in about the pond yet?
I am not sure.
Yeah.
I, I think it's going to depend on how we want to pursue it, so I think, you know, through our ordinance, there's some avenues on taking care of this. I think usually in planning, we're a little hesitant on holding permits, I think there might be some legal issues with that, so I think that would be one we'd want to talk through with Jeff Graham, to make sure that he feels comfortable with us holding a permit, or not allowing them to pull additional permits until they have done their commitments. So, it, it's just one we need to navigate through in a very mindful way to make sure we are doing it properly.
Like I said, both these issues, this is, we're, these are the issues I'm starting to look at, just at the, the first level. There's a lot more homework to be done, there's a lot more digging to be done. But it just needs more, more time to do that.
More than a week.
Yeah, I'm going to have a motion.
A motion that we approve the town manager's report?
And a motion, we have a second, I'll second that, and a motion second, horse bell please.
Steve Diddy.
Hi.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Jane Davis.
Hi.
Get that.
Hi.
I do want to, sorry, Chuck, go ahead. I didn't want to forget, that's why I was trying to keep it up on my, speaking up about it, but Judge G was not able to be heard on this earlier when you guys went through his reports, but he did want you guys to know, he was texting me on here, that if you guys had any questions about his report, he'd be happy to answer them. You're welcome.
I might say something here, before Scott took this job, we, we spent the last eleven or twelve weeks when this COVID, with the guys staying at home. But, we've got since, you've got such a good group of guys, that they came in, they got everything done. There was never any hesitation, many, many times, they did stuff that we didn't know anything about, they got contacted, just, Rachel did a great job, and just a good, good bunch of guys.
And the ladies, utility office ladies were excellent, you know, Kayla back in planning was chugging along too.
And my ladies were superb.
Rachel and I made contact each other during this twelve week period, or whatever it was. We really had no major issues, when I say major issues, from Res is calling in with a problem or something. If there was a problem, the guys and the ladies in the office took care of it, even when they weren't here. The guys would jump in the trucks and go take care of it, go back home, really, no issues at all, so, the whole team is, I'm very thankful for, so.
Very proud of it, during this time, they are lucky for, even with the middle talent who helped out, so, above and beyond.
Hey, Nick's there, part of his old business, ordinance twenty dash eleven, or disregard non-traditional vehicles. We opened this up, discussed it last meeting, but took no votes. It's too far online.
No, he's not, it's unusual.
I slam, I'll throw you under the bus if I can here.
Absolutely.
Why don't you talk about what you and I and Jeff went through, as far as changes and so forth on the non-traditional?
What you have in front of you with the non-traditional ordinance, and can you hear me okay?
Yeah, very good.
Okay, very good, if you can't ever hear me, please let me know. And basically, we had put together this ordinance, there had been some discussion on, on potential changes or feedback. I don't think, after the point in time, we put together a draft for you to review, I don't think there was a lot of feedback that Jeff, I know I did not receive any, and I don't believe Jeff received any feedback as far as changes. So, there have been a couple of things to point out, but basically, what you have in front of you, in front of the, this particular ordinance, not the golf cart one, because they are separate with off-road vehicle, is basically what's provided for in state statute. So, you can see as you go through the ordinance, that there are several definitions of what is considered an off-road vehicle in state law. Actually, way too many to include in the actual ordinance itself, which is why there's a reference in section two E to what the term vehicle means. So there are a lot of definitions as to what that term applies to, for a lot of different types of vehicles. But, there's a combination of things that were in your prior ordinances, and that are still in this ordinance, there's the registration component, and then there's also the insurance and the license and age requirements, as well as other things. There's a lot more restrictions in state law when it pertains to off-road vehicles than it does to golf cart ordinances, which is why you'll see the differences between the two types of ordinances, there's a lot more content in the off-road vehicle ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through this, I don't want to take up much of your time and go through it, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
He was in at the phone call in, and I didn't know the number, so I, he has permission to speak now, Mark, so if you want to sing your song now.
I threatened to sing if she unmuted me. The only, the only thing I'd like to say is, one, Ashley's done an awesome job, I believe she even offered, authored the ordinance for the county, so, having her on board with this was awesome to work with. Number two, though, there's been a lot of concern, for some reason, everybody in town was worried we were taking their golf carts. And I want to stress the fact that we actually made the ordinance leni, more lenient than how we originally written it up. They can now operate on State Street and Pendleton Avenue, and, and park downtown, so. That's, that's really the only change to it.
Hey, Mark, Chief R.
Yeah.
Let's, let's keep this, not on the golf carts, but on the ATV.
The non-traditional?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, well, again, even discussing that, it now allows for those type of vehicles, they just, they still have to meet the, the equipment requirements, but even that's a win-win for the citizens. No longer is it tied to just a golf cart, now we can look at the ATVs and UTVs, et cetera. So, I just know there's been some concern, of course, Pendleton Chatter discussing that we were, we were taking away golf carts and these type vehicles, and that's not the case at all, so.
And I will add that your prior ordinances, as Chief mentioned, did have, kind of, it was one ordinance that covered both golf carts and other vehicles, so we separated it out to make it a lot more clear and easier for the town, as well as the citizens to review and follow, so that's why you have a So that's why you have a separate off-road vehicle ordinance versus a golf cart ordinance. So, um, the, there are differences and there are differences in state law. So that's why it's easier to keep them separate.
Question from the public. Um, is this the right time to let them? Okay. Katie Fessler, um, I just made it so you're able to speak if you want to ask your question or make your comment. Katie, can you hear us? I don't know. Okay, we can move forward if. Katie, can you hear us? Okay, I'd say move forward. Go ahead. I don't think she's going to ask her question, so go ahead and continue the discussion.
Uh, the only thing I would say then is if, if Katie can hear me, if she has any concern or question, feel free to call into the PD tomorrow. And, um, I'll try to get her an answer.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments? This is an ordinance, so we'll just do the first reading tonight, then if we've got more questions or comments, you know, but I think this cleans up a lot, not only for the residents understanding things, but how the police department can enforce some of the younger people on, stuff on the streets. So. At that point, if there's no more public questions, Rachel.
Nope.
I have to ask, I can't see that. I'd like to have a motion on ordinance 20 dash 11 on the non-traditional vehicles.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 20 dash 11 on the current reading.
I've got a motion in a second for ordinance 20 dash 11, non-traditional vehicles. Voice vote please.
All right, we could have a roll call on ordinance 20 dash 11. Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Bob Jones. Jeff Baer. Four oh.
Four oh on the first reading for the non-traditional ordinance number 20 dash 11. Hey, Ashley, let's go ahead and go to 20 dash 12, the golf carts.
Would you like me to speak on this as well?
Please.
Okay. So 20 dash 12 is your, um, again, ordinance in regards to golf carts. As I mentioned previously, the prior ordinances of the town had combined both types of vehicles in the same ordinance. So we separated out the off-road with the golf carts. There are a lot less restrictions in the golf cart ordinance as opposed to the off-road vehicle, and that's because that's how it's, it's outlined in state law. Some of the provisions in the golf cart ordinance are the same as they were in your prior ordinance specifically in regards to registration component. There is, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, one of the changes that it was made in this ordinance as opposed to your prior ordinance, ordinance was in relation to the designated roads in section six of the ordinance. The prior ordinance, um, specifically 2014 dash oh four, stated that golf carts should not be operating on State Street, and that provision was taken out in this ordinance, which I know Chief is already, um, mentioned during the discussion of the, of the off-road vehicle ordinance. So that's one of the major changes. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions. You'll see the rules and regulations set out, set out in section seven. And again, happy to answer any questions as you review this.
Chief R, you helped out on this, but the way, uh, I understand it, so there's no questions from some of the comments been made to me. Along with State Street. Pendleton Avenue is not actually named like State Street is, but it's okay on Pendleton Avenue, correct?
Yes, I believe when we first wrote, wrote this years ago, there was a concern about people up on, uh, North Pendleton Avenue wanting golf carts. And, um, at first it was one of the prohibited roadways and I think it was changed. Because slow-moving vehicles have the slow-moving placards, um, that's one of the, the mandates. We're just hoping people realize that if traffic's behind them, that they do move over when they can and make way for motorized traffic. But, um, yes, you can, any road in, in town Pendleton. Uh, and when I say that, people need to be aware, 36, 67, et cetera, those are still state highways. So even, uh, driving down them a short distance to get somewhere is illegal.
Correct. These ordinances only apply within the town of Pendleton Town Limits.
Right. A lot of people get confused about the roadways and, uh, you know, 67, nine out by the high school are in town, but there's still a state highway. And so a golf cart would be illegal on that.
And one thing I want to, because it's been thrown up to me, it's nothing new, but the license requirements, there's an Indiana code. An operator of golf cart must have a valid driver's license.
Right.
Would bring this up right now.
So that is a good, um, point. Uh, it is Indiana code and I cited 924 dash one dash seven B that the code does require, um, that you have to have a valid Indiana drivers or valid driver's licenses, or you have to be 16 and have a permit or, um, so there, there's that, there's a statutory requirement in regards to that licensing. So we went ahead and included the first part that you did have to hold a valid driver's license.
Well, I guess I need to ask Ashley, uh, so you're saying that the way it's written now, a 16-year-old with a valid license can operate a golf cart?
No, what I'm saying, yeah. So the way this statute is written specifically is that is that that ordinance that's adopted by the town has to require that an individual who operates a golf cart and the town either holds a driver's license or be at least 16 years and 180 days of age to hold either identification card issued under state statute or a photo exempt identification card issued under state statute. So that's the parameters with what we can work with. So what's in the ordinance now as it exists is that, that you have to have a valid driver's license. We can include that or if you want, but we just went ahead and said you had to have a valid driver, valid driver's license because it's, it's, it's one or the other. You can't, you have to have some form, something.
I just remember one time we discussed mandating someone be 18. Uh, we can't do that?
No, the way that, um, state.
Okay.
Statute is drafted, it specifically says an ordinance can do, um, one or two, basically, and those are the two options.
Yeah, um, perfect. Well, with that being said, I just want to stress to anybody listening or golf cart people that are allowing their 16-year-old, uh, they are to be driven like a vehicle. So full stops and stop signs, um, you know, not cutting intersections, et cetera. It's still being, to be driven like a car. So I've heard some complaints about people just running stop signs because they, they get a feeling like they're not in a car. So they kind of ride like they're on a bike again. And, uh, just want to make sure everybody's safe.
Right. And absolutely, we, you know, we did write in here, you have to have a driver's license in order to be able to operate it.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I think I just saw a question pop up, um, Rachel, on the, on the chat.
Uh, Joe DeWitt asks, what about insurance?
Insurance for golf carts is addressed in paragraph four. This is the same provision that was in the, um, prior ordinances. So nothing changed in regards to that. Um, it was in, um, prior ordinance 70 dash 54. So it does require that, um, it shall, the golf cart, the owner shall maintain insurance and provide proof of the same upon request by the police department.
Comments, questions? Can I have a, uh, motion for ordinance 20 dash 12 in, uh, regard to golf carts? I have a motion to second for ordinance 20 dash 12 on first reading. Voice vote please.
Okay, voice vote on 20 dash 12, Bob Jones.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Jeff Baer.
Hi.
Karen, four to nothing, first reading. Okay, uh, new business is ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, update on impact fees.
I don't have a big update, but we did get the contract signed with Baker Tilly and with, um, Banning to get the process started. Um, I've, I've just been kind of waiting on Baker Tilly and Baker Tilly and Banning to coordinate together. We're going to set up a conference call so we can all kind of touch base and figure out what the next steps are to move forward. And I know Aaron Furis and Jessica Smith have been speaking to each other. The park wants to basically partner up with us to try to have a cost savings, which absolutely makes a ton of sense if we're able to do that. So Aaron, uh, will be working on trying to join those projects together. But if you guys don't have any other questions, I, that, that's kind of the general update on the impact fees.
Beer might send me a note on it and exactly what Rachel was talking about. And talking about what, uh, Aaron was wanting to do, and he mentioned it to me too. And I asked him to get with Jessica. It, it just makes sense. And that's what I told, uh, Jessica in a note back today. You two get together, make sure you get with Scott, everybody's in agreement and move forward and I'll support him. That's a smart way to go.
I think my only question with that will be, and this is to likely Baker Tilly or Banning and whoever else in Pro's Consulting, I think, was working with Aaron on this too. Um, it's just their district is larger than our town boundaries. And so how does that work? You know, I'm curious to see, because they do have, uh, you know, a different district that they cover than us. So, um, how is that going to?
Hey, Rachel.
Yeah.
I talked with both Baker Tilly and Phil from Pro's and we can't collect impact fees from the township because they are not a taxing entity. So we can only collect impact fees within the town limits. So our boundaries are essentially the same in that regard.
A taxing entity in regards to what though? Because I, it's my understanding that the township does collect taxes.
That is not the way I was explained it. How's that? And I can forward you that conversation I had with both of them.
Yes, I would love to look at that.
Okay.
I just have tons of questions. Yes. Thank you, Aaron.
You are welcome.
In new business ordinance 20 dash 13, this is ordinance making service rates for utilities. I don't, I don't like the way that you wrote on there. It's not what we're changing utilities. Okay, that's the rates that we will charge people. Or somebody hits a telephone pole and you have to charge the entity to replace the telephone pole. The rates we have been using, uh, is from 1998. So we've updated them. Ashley, you helped me on this. I don't think we can vote on this because it wasn't.
That's, that's correct. So this is just for your information only. This requires a public hearing before any action can be taken. That public hearing will occur at your August council meeting. It will have to be advertised, um, which it will be in the newspaper. So again, this information only for you to be aware of, um, what it is and the fact that it'll be back on the agenda for a public hearing and you can vote on it first reading, um, following that public hearing at the August meeting.
Ashley, this Willie, uh, I talked to Jill Scott over at your office today and she's going to take care of getting those posted in the papers.
Yes, that's correct. I believe we already have the notice drafted and so Jill will take care of getting that distributed and published in the newspaper. And we'll make sure that you all have a copy as well, so you can post at town hall and on the town's website.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on, ordinance 20 dash 14 is the ordinance to ban the traffic schedule. I don't have that in front of me. That's on the, we, we, the town has got numerous, uh, telephone calls uh, about Broadway and the speed limits. I don't want anybody to think, uh, I got a letter from my slate. I don't want her to think that I'm ignored or I'm just trying to figure out the right thing to do with the police chief and people that can make the changes. The request is to reduce the. Yeah, request is reduce the speed limit to 20 mile an hour. Okay, to do that, you have to have a traffic study. If you have a traffic study, you're going to spend between five and $6,000. And I don't want to do it on one street and the other neighbors want it down on another street. That's how you know we've spent 20, 30,000 dollars to reduce the speed limit. So we're talking with the police chief and the captain and one of the sergeants. We can reduce it to 10 mile an hour. We're still going to have speeders. Okay? And reducing it to 20 or we can reduce it to 25 by just putting signs up and having an ordinance saying we're putting it at 25. Can't go below 25. We, or below, down to 20. We can make it 26 and we're okay. But we're, we're not going to play the game. What, what the chief and the captain, the guys have talked about. And I got with, uh, Jeff Graham. We're looking at maybe putting, we're going to do some investigation with the, the police department. Or we're going to maybe put a three-way stop sign at Indiana Avenue and Broadway just to break the traffic down as they're going out of town and coming in. We're not sure that's the way we're doing it, but we're looking at putting another stop sign on that stretch. And all residential areas unless posted are 30 mile an hour. So if we need to put a sign on the south end of Broadway, then we'll put a sign down there. But we're still going to have speeders and I think what the chief and the captain have actually suggested makes more sense than trying to reduce residential traffic at this time. And we'll get more input from the public. Uh, we can't vote on that tonight as far as putting up stop signs or anything, but it's strictly information. Uh, do you have any comments from? I, I got a lot of phone calls on this and so did Scott and I think Rachel has too. I've got a letter that was mailed to us, but we're looking at it, okay? And government's slow. I'll be the first to admit it. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get something in there. Any questions or comments from the rest of the council?
If I may.
Sure.
She did, she did call late, uh, in the afternoon and basically what you just said, I, I reiterated.
Good, good.
We just, I just said, you know, I've been here a few days. I need to do my homework right. To give her any other answers other than what you gave just now. In fact, I almost sounded like you recorded the conversation because it was almost the same verbiage. I said, we just, I just, I need to do the homework. I just got here. Give me a chance. So. And I did express that you had talked to me about her letter too.
And I'll make a question. On the, on the, uh, East Water Street, by the soccer field there. People are there on the corner of the, you know, East Street and Water Street there. It's kind of Brookport's right there. Going through the home lane stop, uh, bug traffic there, foot traffic there in the soccer field, walking around the trail. And you get a request as well to be, to put a lot of, in your.
They made a request as well to, to be able to put it on there.
We can reduce it to 20 mile an hour, but.
I guess I, I think we're.
I think we're like a couple of worms if we're doing it one place. That's my being.
It's really crazy, there might be something maybe we want to town wise, as far as maybe wanting to be 30 mile an hour, maybe it's something we want to change as far as we have to, how to, you know, the whole, up to the, you get a lot of walkers, you get a lot of kids on bicycles, golf carts, you get a lot of, with traffic, uh, parking.
We can look at it, along with the chief and captain and sergeant, well, the patrol, all of them, we'd basically talk to. Like I said, and I don't mean to be sarcastic about it, but you can make it 10 mile an hour, and we're still going to have people speeding. So we just got so many police officers, and we just got to be diligent, conform to what we're doing. Not good, the reaction that we're going to be getting.
I agree with you, Chet. And one option that we could do is work with, the council governments, they do have cameras that they can put out and do a traffic counter, you know, just to kind of see what is actually going on, to see if it's a perceived issue, or if it absolutely is an issue. You know, I'm not taking one side or the other on if it's, you know, how many people are speeding per day, but, you know, if it's, if we just have more data, then I think we can make a more informed decision.
Any other questions or comments?
The only, I'm sorry, this is Chief Far.
Hold on, Chief Far.
Okay.
Yeah, here is a lot of speed running down, but maybe a suggestion to look into things in designated areas around the town. That's a possibility.
Thank you.
I just had a text from someone who lives out here on South Pendleton Avenue, and he's complaining about the speed there, too, so that's someone else we might need to look at, too.
Chief Far, did you have a comment to make?
Yeah, the only thing I had is, is what's best as far as enforcing traffic, is my officers move throughout the day to different areas, and as we receive complaints, we work in those areas. One way to help us target specific incidents is what times of the day it occurs most. For example, Captain Sidwell was quick to tell me that he goes to Broadway quite frequently, and you may get one or two cars in a 30 or 40, 45, 50-minute time period. That's not a good use of manpower, when another officer can be in Falls Park, when the kids are playing in the water, or along the, you know, the sidewalks, et cetera. So if someone has a speed concern, it's definitely best to just reach out to me, either through our website or Facebook page, and email me, or even call the station. And then what I do is I just let my guys know, hey, this particular 100 block, they're telling me it's happening between 7:00 a.m. and 8:30, when people are going to work. And then it's just a better targeting of the manpower for a specific area. Yeah, like Chet said earlier, every road has a speeder. I'm not that naive to say that, that it doesn't happen on every road. We just can't be on every road every day, at it every time. So if, if there's a complaint about a certain area, and we can narrow it down to a specific time, then I can help my men target it a little better. And we used to, we used to have some equipment that, that did traffic study. The problem is, in the computer age, the software became outdated. So I'm always willing to look at purchasing those type of items. It actually helps, just like Rachel was suggesting, and it helps us also. So we may be able to look into purchasing something that we can use currently that's better than what we had. Like I said, what we had, the software is outdated. But if people have a complaint, just get with me, and I let the men know, and it helps them be able to target it better.
Hey, discussion regarding uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement. What this says is, with our new town manager and our current lawyer, Scott's got him, I looked at it today, but it just says conflict of interest disclosure that we need to look at as a council, and so that all of us know, this, I'll sign it, along with Scott signed it, and he'll go into his file.
Would you like me to comment?
Sure.
Okay. So Indiana law requires that if any conflict that you may have, so I was doing some engineering work before I took this job, and even though it's not under a contract with the town directly, it was for the city of Anderson, which has an MOU with Pendleton, and on the 67th Street project. So this, just to follow Indiana law, states that to you, so you all know that, that I previously worked on that project. I'm no longer working on that project for the engineering company. But the right thing to do is to let you know that there is that conflict, and it preexisted before, before I came.
And I would just note, this is Ashley, again, this is on the standard conflict of interest disclosure statement, as approved by the State Board of Accounts. The board will need to vote to accept this, so you'll need to have a motion and a second, and a roll call vote to accept this. And then once it is voted on and accepted, then it will need to be filed pursuant to the instructions on page three, and it's filed with the State Board of Accounts and also with the clerk of the circuit court here in Madison County.
I'll make a motion then to accept the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement.
I'll take it, I got a motion to second to accept Scott's uniform conflict of interest statement. Roll call vote, please.
Shane Davis.
Hi.
Steve Denny.
Hi.
Bob Jones.
Hi.
Jeff Ma.
Hi.
Motion carried for zero. Any other questions or comments?
Chief Far, if you're still, if you can hear us, we had some interesting things happen this last month with the police department. We had a pretty good drug bust, we saw it on here. One thing, one reason I want to bring this up is, we're still way short on police officers. A lot of stuff's happening in town more and more. I don't know if it's something we really need to find a way to get more officers on duty. The speeding issue we've got, everything else, we're short manpower. We've been short, and all we're doing is getting farther and farther behind. So I don't know what we need to look at, or how, what we need to do to try to find this money to get that. Chief Far, are you there?
Yes, yes.
How many officers do you feel that we are down right now, under our current, just as of today? I mean, I know during the next year, we're going to be even farther behind because of all the houses coming in.
Right. I believe, I believe right now mathematically, it's 2.7 that we're behind. Two would definitely be a great help. We, in fact, we discussed that today. Right now, I've got two officers down with injuries, and we're really, and then we have school starting here in another couple of weeks, and we'll be losing Officer Baker from the road back to the school. I don't want anybody to think that the town's not covered or anything like that, we still have men working, but, but yeah, we're, I think the true math today is 2.7, and that's not including the build-out at Huntsinger, Garrick Glen, or, yeah, Garrick Glen or the Falls, so.
Thanks, Shane. Shane, that's really right. I wish I had an answer. Scott and I have talked about this, this first week. Believe me, we're trying. Any other comments? I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure.
No, no, we're on it, I'm sorry.
I live on Franklin Street. I just wanted to know, like, the, for, like, five blocks, and are they also going to be replacing all the trees that were, one, knocked down, but they also were going to cut some down, too?
We do have grant money in place that we received within the last year to do a tree replacement project. However, we wouldn't be replacing any trees on Franklin Street until we do a construction project on it, too. And what we had looked at prior to Scott coming on board, so I don't want to say that this is set in stone by any means, because, you know, having a new town manager on board, we need him to get acclimated to the project, and make sure, you know, what his input is. Well, we did get an estimate for design work, and we're, I just gave it to Scott today so we can start reviewing it. We had been relying heavily on community crossings fund. However, NDOT is not making that available this fall because of some projections they have on funding because of COVID. So we, as a town, need to come up with how we will pay for Franklin Street, since the funding sources that we were relying on in the past are not going to be available. So I can't, at this time, give you a really good answer on timeframe, but we know it's a priority, and we know we need to get it done as soon as possible.
Yeah, go back on.
No. Yeah.
Dan, before, before you leave, if I could get your phone number, as soon as we get done looking at that, you know, one of, one of the things that I will look at is, what can we do with our own workforce? If that's feasible, if not, and of course, digging for the money. So if I get your phone number before you leave, as soon as I have a better idea, I'll give you a call. So, in fact, I just want to write that on.
Is there any other public input or questions, Rachel?
Um, no, but if there is anyone else that is on the call or online that would like a question, to ask a question, please raise your hand, or ask it now, and we'll get it addressed. And I'm not seeing anything pop up, so. I think we're good.
Maybe updates are identified, we're going to look them out there, or waiting on contracts with the police.
So we were told that they were going to be coming at the end of June. I got another call from, or Fareed, who is our contact with NDOT, and he said the contractor was getting pushed to another NDOT job, and that was, of course, bigger than ours, and more of a priority than ours. So I've been told now, the end of July. So that'll be something that Scott and I will kind of revisit within this month, too, to see if there's anything we can do to get it moving forward in a more quickly way, more quickly. But everything is in place, the funding's in place, the design's in place, we're just waiting for the contractors.
If delays get so ridiculous, I think at a minimum, we could probably do some signage or something to make it clear, more familiar. So we'll see. If it keeps getting, people are frustrated with it, it doesn't look good. It looks like the town messed up, it's not our project, per se. So we need to do something.
All right, I'll make another motion to adjourn.
Thanks, guys, ladies.
Thank you.